All right, a quick change here. The Resolution 6619 was given, or actually mislabeled as a finance piece, which I have in the regular agenda. I'm going to move that down to President Wu's meeting prep in the bottom of our agenda. So we're going to put that one below Resolution 6719. And then Mr. McDaniel will be the owner of that piece.
What committee does it go to?
Economic Development. All right, so with that, let's get started. So the first item I have tonight is the Resolution 6119. And we can talk about 6219 because they kind of go hand in hand together. Now, that's a resolution to create a new fund and set up revenue and expense accounts for Court Electronic Monitoring Funds 49. And then Resolution 62 will be the resolution that will appropriate $225,000 into that fund for the services and hardware associated with that fund. As the auditor mentioned, I think last meeting, that she'd be sending forth the information to set up the fund and then also to basically appropriate into the fund. Are there any questions on either one of those pieces, auditor nettles? Is there anything else you'd like to add to these?
Nope, you stated perfectly.
How about that? Does anyone have any questions? I think we talked about this pretty much. What's our timing on these?
I kind of want... Are we going to have suspended and pass or...
We can't. I was going to ask you if we had a bill in hand.
I don't know. I don't think we have one as of yet. That would be first Court Administrator Jackie Long. And I don't know if she's here. But it's just more a passage with the information that Randall brought forward, the legislation he has from last meeting. It's kind of, I want it to be passed about the same time. So if they're being suspended on the second...
Yeah, we can go ahead and suspend to get this set up. And we know that, obviously, this came up kind of quickly and we know we're moving. Absolutely. Okay.
So yeah, if counsel does not mind, I would like for both pieces to be passed and suspended so we can get everything set up and ready for the courts to move forward.
Gotcha. Is there any objection to that? All right, yeah, we'll go ahead and do that. I know we talked that there was timing associated with these. And basically, this is creating the funds and appropriating it with the money we're going to get for the funds. And it's not our money, it's the county money.
Correct.
Right? Okay, so we will actually go suspension on 6119. And Mrs. Downhour will second that. And Mr. McDaniel will second the second piece. And we'll ask for suspension on both. All righty. Mark up my stuff here and get moving here. All right. Next item I have is Resolution 6319. That's a resolution to amend Resolution 2818 and authorize the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the Park Street Locust/ Ewing Street Sewer Rehabilitation Project. And Mr. Woodger, if you want to combine 63 and 64 in the discussion, you're welcome to do that or treat them separately.
That's it. That's them separately. 63, basically, when we originally estimated what we thought it was going to cost was too low, so that's why we have to rebid.
Yep.
That's the whole purpose of that one.
And that...
And we will go two readings on that.
Okay. And that has gone from $750,000, I think, to $1.2 million or something like that?
Right. Correct.
Okay.
And then in the... Let me read through the second first.
It's going to be Don because Mr. Bowles isn't here.
Yes. We don't have any trouble figuring out who's seconding that. And second one's the same thing as where... Has to do with the same sewer. We've got to redo one that we originally had passed and because of the original estimate being low and everything.
Yeah, this is additional engineering for that one, I believe.
Right.
That goes from $175,000 to $200,000.
Yeah.
They're two uniquely different pieces.
Different, but both the same reason.
Correct. And Mr. Wellsted, want you to give us just a quick overview, Reader's Digest version? We don't need the...
I'll try to keep in layman's terms here.
Yeah, we don't need the engineer's book on it.
Sure, absolutely, yes. As Jerry noted, for the first one there, 6319, again, this is the project. We tried to bid last year. Unfortunately, our engineer's estimate was substantially low, so we did not get any successful bids. So we, again, are rebidding that with the higher estimate there. That's been corrected. And then we also added a little bit of scope of work on that. We're going to fix the head wall down there on the Park Street Storm Sewer there at the Hocking River near the Goodwill there at Fair Avenue. That's been in pretty bad shape for a while. And we figured, let's throw that in as well while we're in the area. So as noted, that went up from, I think, again, $725,000 or $750,000 is what 2818 authorized. We're asking for $1.2 now. And then 6419, again, similar reasons, because of that rebid. We had additional engineering. They have to go through more design, bidding negotiating, their assistance through all that. And then, again, that additional scope of work, they added in for that head wall repair, the design work there. So... And as noted, I think the previous resolution approved $175,000. We're asking up to $200,000 for that contract amendment there.
Any further questions on this? And thank you for the heads up with your email. And I think Holly asked a couple of questions and that really kind of gave clarity to it. Does anyone have any other questions for Mr. Wellsted? And Jerry, you said two readings on both?
Yeah.
All right, thanks, Stephen.
Very good, thank you.
All right, we'll go two readings on 63 and 64. Next item is 6519. That's a resolution to appropriate from the general fund to pay a damage claim. So Melody, you're going to stick it to the general fund? What's going on here?
Thank you very much, Tom. Is Mike Thorpe going to speak on this or are you going to speak on it, Randall?
Mike's here, too, so...
Both of... How about both of you?
There we go.
How about both of you speak on this?
Both of me?
This is one... Well, Mike, you can fill it... You can fill in the blanks or whatever, I guess, if I...
Go ahead, Randy.
So this is one, we received a claim into the city with regard to some damage occurred from a tree. We gathered information internally, submitted it to Wicker, our insurance carrier, for review. Based on discussions with them and everything, we determined that there was some fault here. We believe there, you know, was some fault here. So negotiated and settled this thing for, basically, their deductibles for the house and the vehicle. So that's what we have at this point.
Mr. Roth has a question.
Did it fall on a house or a car?
Both.
Both?
Yes, both.
And a garage.
Double hit.
Actually, I don't think... Was it the house? Did it hit the house at all or did it take down the garage?
Not really. It's more the garage than the car and the truck.
Or is it attached garage?
Mike, do you have anything to add to that?
No, it's just, this early in the year and that department, the Tree Commission operates on a shoestring budget to begin with. And to pull $2,800 out of that Tree Commission, I'd be struggling at the end of the year.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it seems... Doesn't seem unreasonable. I have a question. Someone else today, it's an aside, but it is a Tree Commission question. Is there a backlog of work on taking down trees in the city that maybe residents have called in? Or, you know, what's that process when, you know, it's a city tree, it's recognized, it needs to be acted upon? And then, how long does it take to actually act upon it and get things cleaned up?
So we receive the phone calls in one of probably three different manners. It either comes from code enforcement. It comes as a direct call right to the Parks Office. We handle that as a Tree Commission call. Or I'm called directly. So in one of those three veins, we put it in a logbook. At that point, then, I or myself, or Justin, forester, we go out and look at and assess the tree. Is it truly a tree that needs to come out? Is it dead, dying, diseased, or dangerous? Does it pose a hazard? And then we assess the timing of it. If it's something that needs to come out, we take it out as soon as humanly possible. If it's not, then we will usually deadwood and trim the tree. And the tree stays. There's not a lot of gray area in between. Either the tree meets the criteria or it doesn't.
Okay, because someone had asked me a question about timing or they thought the city was going to take the tree out and then it... And I need to go back and check my notes. I don't have that book here with me.
Right.
But that's why I kind of asked that question, so...
I'd love to know the address.
Yeah. And again, I'll circle back to you.
Is this situation in question, was this tree assessed before this had happened or any time previous to that?
Yes, it was assessed before this happened.
Was it on a list to come out?
No. And if I walked out on the tree again today, we still wouldn't take the tree out.
My question is, like a lot of these around town, some of which we've questioned, one over on Frederick that comes to mind right away, one on Mulberry that comes to mind right away. Can we look for more of these situations to happen? And is this the price of, with some of these old trees, the desire to have the canopy over the desire for saying, we need to take some of these older trees out?
We wouldn't take that tree out even if we looked at it today. It was... It was a tree that was in good shape.
I'm sorry?
That was a tree that was in good shape.
Well, I think there's other trees that's going to cause this same type of situation.
We have, our forester is certified in tree risk assessment. He is trained to go out and look at a tree and assess the tree's health, condition, its liability. And we looked at that tree. And we didn't think it met any of the criteria to take it down. So, I mean, we would take that same process that the state uses, ODNR uses, the same process, the same certification that Justin has, and we would do the same thing. So just because it's a big old tree doesn't mean we're going to take it out.
Okay. Well, I didn't mean to open a... I was just asking more about process. Melody, use your second on this and what's your timing or...
It'll be Jerry. And do we... Do we need two readings for this?
If we could do... If we could suspend on it, that would be great.
I'll ask for suspension. I do have another question.
Sure.
Was this on a high wind night that this happened?
Very, very much so. Actually, I was traveling to Mansfield that day and the trees were just coming down left and right, each side of the road. So, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we'll ask for suspension so we can obviously pay the folks back. They've already paid the deductible, I'm guessing, and we can pay them back. And then Jerry will be the second, suspension on 6519. Next item I have was going to be 6619. We put that down. So the next item is 6819. And in advance of that, I'm going to recuse myself from the chair because of this legislation and ask Holly Downhour to take the leadership position and talk about this 6819.
Sure. So Resolution 68-19 is the resolution that we talked about at length at the last council meeting. And this is to allow the law director's office to cover the cost out of their contract labor account for the court advocate position that is going to be paid through August of 2019. Randall, can you elaborate a little bit more on the detail behind the resolution?
Yes, thank you. So as we discussed at the last meeting, this is a grant funded, so there's three victim advocates. This is one particular, and there are different funding sources for them, grant funding sources. This is basically a stopgap measure so that we can maintain the current level of crime victim advocacy services that we provide or that are provided in the municipal court. And so what this is from May to August is basically stopgap so that they are applying for grant renewals and should have those answers by August, by the end of August. And of course, we have an exact amount that's in here that will be invoiced monthly to us for payment.
Okay. Any questions, Jerry?
Just a comment. We had discussed this at the last meeting and we did discuss suspension because in order to make the payroll for the individual involved, I think that that's a legitimate way to go.
Yes, I will be asking for suspension tonight. And Mr. McDaniel will be seconding. Any other questions before I turn it back over to Mr. Stotan? Okay?
Thank you, Holly. I appreciate you leading that discussion. Next item I have on tonight's agenda are departmental updates. Do we have any departmental updates this evening? Oh, Oliver Nettles.
Just an update that on the next council meeting, I'm bringing forth the 2020 tax budget in front of council that has to be passed by the final council meeting in June to get it to and certified to the county auditor's office, up to the county budget commission. So it's just to let you know that I'll be bringing it in next council meeting.
That's an annual requirement and it's our best guest at the time.
Correct.
All right, perfect. Very good. Other departmental updates. Seeing none, I will defer to President Wu for tonight's meeting prep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two more items to prepare for. Temporary Resolution 6619, which is a resolution establishing the community reinvestment area and authorizing real property tax exemptions. We're going to... Mr. McDaniel, you okay if we just toss straight to the mayor here?
Yes, I think he would have the information necessary.
Mr. Mayor, I understand there may be some misinformation about this particular resolution and so enlighten us tonight about what's happening here.
Well, I've had a number of phone calls today that said there was misinformation about this. I'm not exactly sure what all the misinformation is, but I guess we'll try to address this. This is an issue, the CRA overlay for multifamily housing. We have... I have talked about this at at least two council meetings in the past about what it was all about and the fact it was coming. We've done a lot of work to get to this point, up to including a law firm in Columbus and Randall's done a lot of work on it and I've done a lot of work on it. Basically, this involves a CRA overlay for Census Tracks 317, 320, and 322. Those are the three poorest areas of the city of Lancaster. Census Track 317 is just west of Memorial Drive or just west of the Hocking River, runs basically from Lincoln Avenue up to Memorial Drive. Census Track 320 is... Includes the downtown area and goes north. Actually, I have a map here. It might be easiest to show it that way. So the area outlined in green around here is Census Track 317. The one outlined in blue is Census Track 320. And the one outlined in purple is Census Track 322. Those are the three poorest areas of Lancaster. For instance, the city's median family income is $53,739. The state's median family income is $66,885. And Fairfield County's is $76,051. The median family income for these three census tracks, 317 is $41,929, 320 is $36,822, and 322 is $35,773. So this started out as an effort to make the gateway site more marketable. It's been sitting there for three or four years for sale. There have been no takers. It's an expensive piece of property, too expensive to develop. So this was an effort to provide some economic development incentive to have something happen there. I have learned over some period of time in talking to different developers, and we've invited a number down to look at that space, that the best use of that is residential, which corresponds directly to the shortage of residential housing in the surrounding area and the demand for housing in the downtown area and the waiting list that most of the properties downtown have. So in beginning to work on this and looking at these numbers, it quickly became apparent that Census Track 317 and 322 were also in pretty dire straits. And why don't we expand this incentive to include those? 317 and 322 have recently been designated as federal opportunity zones under the 2017 Tax Act. They're the only two in... Two census tracks in Lancaster that were selected for this. It also indicates their economic status is pretty poor. So in doing the research for this housing survey, it made a lot of sense to include all those. There is a... The original CRA covers part of this area, but it excludes residential. It is set up for industrial and commercial. These three census tracks probably aren't ever going to get a large commercial development or industrial because they're not zoned appropriately for that. They're zoned for residential. So this is an opportunity to bring housing to these areas, hopefully affordable housing, and also to generate some jobs for construction. And once you have more people, then there's a good chance that some other development will follow. The process is, city council has to approve this legislation, then it has to be published for two weeks, and then it goes to the Development Services Agency in Columbus for the state's approval. All that can probably take up to two months or longer. So I would like to have this passed in two readings if possible, just so we can get things rolling for this. You know, this is an effort to help some poor areas of Lancaster. Question, did I miss anything, Randall, that you popped up?
All right, who's got some questions here for the mayor? Mr. Roth?
I have some questions, but I would like to hold most of these until the regular reading. The other... The only thing I really want to mention right now is it's nice to see a map in the legislation that we got on Friday that was sent out. It only had parcel numbers and did not have a map with it. I had not seen this map before until right now.
I apologize for that. I forgot to attach the map.
Yeah, and like I say, I do have some other questions as far as stuff on here, but I would like to hold it for the regular meeting.
Great. Other questions for the mayor? Ms. Downhour?
And just to clarify, this is not for single-family homes. This is for multifamily units, right?
Right.
Like duplexes or four units?
Actually, not even duplexes. It's three-family units or above.
Okay, thank you.
So it didn't make sense that somebody building a single-family home ought to get a real estate tax abatement.
Right.
We're looking for a large development that will generate some significant amount of housing.
And this isn't for anything existing, right? This is only...
This is for nothing existing. Absolutely not. I know I heard one of the rumors going around was every one of these parcel numbers would not pay any real estate taxes for the next 15 years. That's absolutely false. This is only on new development. And even as an example, if a developer came in and bought a piece of land for, let's say, $200,000 and spent $3 or $4 million to build an apartment building or several apartment buildings, they would continue to pay real estate taxes on the land and on any structure that is currently there that is continuing to be used. The real estate tax abatement is available only for the improvements to the property. In other words, the new buildings that they construct.
Okay, very good. Mr. Woodger?
Oh, further question on that. There's an existing building that was used for another purpose, but they're remodeling it and changing into housing. Does it qualify?
There are certain specifications. You have to spend so much money in order for that to occur.
And this is 100% for 15 years?
It can be up to 100% for 15 years.
Up to?
Which matches the other CRA for industrial and commercial.
Who decides what?
There is... There is a city housing officer that the application is made to. There's also then a city... A CRA Housing Council that is made up of seven members appointed. The city council appoints two members, the mayor appoints two members. The planning commission appoints one member, and then those five people appoint two more.
Okay. And just so I'm clear on this, if there is a structure there that has already been announced that it's going to be housing, but they have not started construction, it could apply for this?
Yeah, yeah. Don't know why not.
Okay.
Other questions for the mayor? I want to make sure that we get all the... Everything out that we can here. Yes, Mr. Stotan?
So let me be clear. I live in Census Track 317, so I'm getting a 15-year property tax exemption, correct?
No.
All right.
You're not.
Mr. Stotan's voting now.
If you have a piece of property in Census Track 317 and you build a multifamily apartment building, then you may be eligible for...
I just want to put the myth to bed. We live in 317, 320, 322. Unless you build something, just as you stated, your property taxes are going to be handled as they have been in the past.
Exactly.
Thank you very much.
You have to invest a significant amount of money to be eligible to do this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. That does clear up a lot.
Yes, very helpful. Other questions for the mayor? I can't see you. No questions, no...
Well, I hadn't called this one.
It won't raise. We tied it down.
You know, I got my scrap on the West Side. I did want to ask a question. Talking about, you know, we're on the West Side, like the properties that was torn down.
Yes. I mean, like by the land bank?
Right.
Okay.
So what about those properties that are vacant? Are we doing anything? Because I... The Exhibit B was on there. Because you'd sent Holly and I something back in, what was it, January? What looks like the same thing that was attached, because Exhibit B is mentioned in this. Of course, I know there was a housing thing, but...
There are a list of houses in there that have been torn down and another list of ones that are slated to be torn down. Right. And that's just used for the state to assess the condition of the housing in general in that area. So it's listed as, as an example of the dire straits of houses in here. These houses have been torn down in the last three years, the list of them. And then these houses are slated to be torn down in the near future.
Okay. So what about those empty properties?
I mean, they're eligible if somebody... I mean, they're single-family lots, so you're probably not going to build them.
Well, some of it's also in the flood zone, so I don't know that they could build...
Well, I mean, any property that is built has to comply with zoning and city regulations. And they would likely not be able to build a multifamily apartment building in a flood zone.
Right. I know that. But I'm just saying, with those vacant properties sitting there, that the land bank has not acted on what to do with them.
Well, when the land bank acquires a property and demolishes a house, they... Depending on the source of funding, they can't do anything with it for three years.
I know, they have to ask the neighbors.
Typically, they ask the neighbors, and it's not unusual for a lot to be split between two neighbors, and it's sold to them for a very reasonable price. And I believe, I recall that just recently, a lot was sold to a neighbor that was... The house was demolished on. And... But they have to hold it for three years if it comes from Neighborhood Improvement Program funds.
And then here, of course, back in, was that 2005 is designated for now? Was there a community reinvestment in a housing officer back in 2005?
Because on here... The city building official is designated as a housing officer, and that has effectively been Pete Vale for as long as he's been here.
Because when I looked on the organizational chart, though, it's not listed. You have your building department that, but that's just not listed.
Yeah, I mean, there hasn't been any call, other than an annual report to the state Developmental Services Agency for housing officer. There hasn't... Nobody's applied for anything, so...
Okay.
And actually, if I could add to that, that goes back to the original... The CRA goes back to 1979 when council put that first one, the industrial, commercial one, into place. So that housing officer and everything has been the same designation as it's been since 1979.
It was a good year.
Were you guys born?
Yes, we were. Other questions for the mayor? Mr. Stotan?
Just one more point. I think that for Mr. Roth's benefit, I think we ought to, during the regular meeting, put the map back up and have the same...
Sure.
The same discussion. Now hypothetically, if I live in Track 320, am I going to get free property taxes for the next 15 years?
You're going to keep paying them. If you're paying them now, you're going to continue to pay them.
All right. Thought I'd take the bait home.
Why don't you just wrap the last one up and make sure-
322? I know it just happens that there are a number of city council homes in these three areas, but no, they're going to continue to pay real estate taxes. This is my risk.
All right.
Yeah, Randy's in it, Becky's, I think it is, Cory's, Molly's. Sorry, Randy, you're going to keep paying them.
All right, further questions? Further questions on this? Very good, okay. We need a second on this, Mr. McDaniel?
Mrs. Downhour, will you second this?
Yes.
And we are planning for this to go for two readings, right?
Yes.
So two readings on 6619 with Ms. Downhour as the, as the second. All right, very good. Our last one tonight, then, is Temporary Resolution 6719. This is a resolution authorizing the engineer to assist the Fairfield County Transportation Improvement District in applying for ODOT's Transportation Improvement District funding for fiscal year 2020. This having to do with Project Magma. So any, who's the sponsor? Mr. Skunov?
It's me, Mr. Nolan.
Here comes Mr. Nolan.
Please approach.
This is another piece that we are working on in the engineer's office through the Fairfield County Transportation Improvement District. I sit on that board. I've been working with that board for approximately a year or so. The county commissioners appointed me to that, and this project obviously is of great interest to them as well. So I discussed that with them last Thursday. They've made a motion for me to continue getting the funding and all the applications and things together to submit to ODOT, which is, our deadline is May 31st. This would be for $250,000. The TID Board, just so you know, just a little history, supported a project up in Pickerington, which would be the Refugee Road project up there. I don't know if you guys are familiar with all the construction happening up there, but we applied for that as well and got $250,000 for that project. So we're doing the similar thing for all the public improvements that are happening out on Mill Park Drive and Anchor Avenue and all the different things that are happening out there. So they are in support of this, and I am going to be working with them. I will be coming back to you for an inter-agency governmental agreement once, if we get funded. I've been told from ODOT that we look pretty good for this project, so there's a little summary of what we're trying to do here in the next three weeks.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Nolan. Any questions for Mr. Skunov or Mr. Nolan? If not, we're looking for suspension tonight?
Yes.
So we're going to ask for suspension, and who's your second, Mr. Skunov?
Mrs. Bobbitt, please.
Mrs. Bobbitt, you'll second? Very good. So we will ask for suspension then on Temporary Resolution 6719. That's all I have for this evening, and I will toss it back to the chairman.
Is there any other items for finance? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second? Mr. President, we are adjourned.
The regular meeting of Lancaster City Council will begin at approximately 6:35.
There is no place like Lancaster, Ohio, and Fairfield County, and like you, I am proud to call them home. As a longtime resident of Lancaster and graduate of Lancaster High School, this community is important to me, and I want to provide superior customer service, professionalism, integrity, and honesty at the Connor Insurance Agency. I am committed to supporting local programs and projects through my volunteer work and board membership with several organizations. It has been a great honor to work with all the first responders throughout Lancaster, Fairfield County, and the state of Ohio to put on Kids and Cops Day, to be a part of Shop with a Cop alongside the Lancaster Police Department and JFS, and to help Lancaster Public Education Foundation raise funds to support our local public schools and teachers. These men and women work hard to protect and support our community, and I would like to take this moment to say thank you for all they do. My goal as a business owner and insurance agent is to provide my clients with the most appropriate services and coverage for their needs at a competitive rate. As an independent agent, I have several carriers to choose from, so I can customize your insurance coverage to fit your needs and desires. I strive to make sure there are no gaps in your coverage that could be harmful and just as important that you are not overinsured. I look forward to serving your insurance needs now and in the future. At Connor Insurance, we are here to serve you by protecting what is important to you. Please contact my office at 740-654-2848 for a full list of services and carriers, or visit my website, connorinsuranceagency.com.
Almost everyone needs a car to get from point A to point B, and many families have two or more cars. At Carriage Company, located at 1031 North Memorial Drive in Lancaster, we specialize in hard-to-find used cars. Due to the recent success of the new car market, there is a large inventory of used cars available for resale. We can help you find exactly what you're looking for. With over 15 years at this location and 27 years' experience in the business, we are the best place to go to find your next car, truck, van, or SUV. As a member of the Better Business Bureau, we are a Carfax Advantage dealer and offer great financing rates through a local area bank, with warranties available on most vehicles. We know your time is valuable, so we take special pride in making sure that you get what you came for at a price that you can afford.
Come into Carriage Company and check out our sweet deals.
Stop by today and let us help you, or visit us online at carriagecompany.com.
The Frank E. Smith Funeral Home and Crematory in Lancaster and the Johnson Smith Funeral Home in Baltimore have a long and wonderful history of serving our community. Feel free to give us a call at 740-653-0652. Stop in and see us at either of our two locations, 405 North Columbus Street in Lancaster or 207 South Main Street in Baltimore. Respect for tradition, regard for change.
Welcome to Lancaster City Council. Please join me in a word of prayer. Father, we are thankful for this day and your many blessings. Here we are once again with work set before us. We pray that you would help us as we rightly represent those who have put us in these positions. May you lead, guide, and direct our work tonight. We ask this in your son's name. Amen. Amen. I hereby call this meeting of Lancaster City Council to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Here.
Mrs. Downhour?
Here.
Mr. Graff?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Stotan?
Here.
Mr. Woodruff?
Yeah, here.
Let the record reflect that all eight members of Lancaster City Council are in attendance this evening. Reading and disposing of the journal.
I'd like to present the regular meeting minutes dated April 22nd, 2019.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the journal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the journal. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Reports of city officials.
Email dated May 1st, 2019 regarding notice at public hearing number two submitted by Mary Jo Smith, Executive Director of Community Development Department. Email dated May 2nd, 2019 regarding May 2019 Economic Development Meeting submitted by Mr. McDaniel. Email dated May 4th, 2019 regarding LPA Awards Ceremony submitted by Mr. Graff. Series of emails dated May 6th, 2019 regarding CRA 3 submitted by Mary David Smith, or excuse me, Mary David Shepherd.
Hell, the tall one.
That's it.
Sorry. And finally, an email dated May 6th, 2019 regarding White House and OU submitted by Laudery Dorado.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of city officials.
Actually, there probably was.
Can we get a second?
Second.
Second.
Someone, anyone.
Amen.
Praise the Lord. All right, we have a motion and a second to accept the reports of city officials. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there any communications?
There are none to be presented.
There are no special presentations this evening. Are there any petitions or memorials?
There are none to be presented.
Record time. Permission for voters and taxpayers. At this time in our meeting, City Council sets time aside for voters and taxpayers of Lancaster to address City Council on any item or topic that they like. If you'd like to address Lancaster City Council tonight, please come forward to the podium. Sign your name and address on the clipboard that is provided there, and then state the name for the record. Please note that during this time, City Council will not respond to any questions or comments you have, but may choose to do so at a later portion of tonight's meeting. In accordance with the rules of City Council, we ask that you would keep your comments to five minutes or less. Is there anyone who would like to address Lancaster City Council this evening? All right, well, thank you all for being here. Are there reports of standing committees?
There are two. Point Nance Committee meeting minutes for May 6th, 2019 submitted by Mr. Stotan, and Public Work Committee meeting minutes for April 12th, 2019 submitted by Mr. Skunov.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of standing committees.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file reports of standing committees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Reports of special committees.
There are none to be presented.
We have no public hearings this evening, so we'll move straight to the reading of resolutions, beginning with the third reading of Temporary Resolution 53-19.
A resolution of consent for preliminary legislation for the widening of E.D. Road with the addition of turn lanes at County Road 33A, Memorial Drive, and County Road 37, North Columbus Street within the city of Lancaster, offered by Mr. Skunov, second by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Mr. Skunov.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to council, excuse me, pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 5319.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 53-19. Discussion, Mr. Skunov.
Yeah, this piece is us giving permission to Mr. Nolan and the engineer's office to work with the state in their funding process of this widening project.
Very good. Any discussion or questions on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Skunov?
Yes.
Mr. Stotan?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 53-19 passes eight to zero. We now have second reading on Temporary Resolution 59-19.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and federal county to negotiate and enter into a memorandum of understanding with the county commissioners to fund the Sentinel Offender Services Contract for electronic monitoring of criminal offenders to be utilized by the county in support offered by Mr. Stotan, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Stot?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of Resolution Temporary 5919.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Resolution 59-19. Discussion, Mr. Stot?
I will give a better discussion after we suspend.
Very good. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Skunov?
Yes.
Mr. Stotan?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodruff?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries eight to zero. Mr. Stot?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to council, pass and gross and enter upon the written record Resolution Temporary 5919.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 59-19. Discussion, Mr. Stot?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So we have four pieces in a row here that all are going to deal with the Sentinel Offender Services Contract and the monitoring required by the municipal court. The municipal court is required to provide monitoring, and with that, we have a memo of understanding with the county who basically pays for that monitoring. We found better technology at a cheaper price with this Sentinel technology, which is on the state bid contract. So what these four pieces are going to do, 59 is going to authorize the mayor to negotiate with the county a new memo of understanding for the better technology and cheaper service, thus meeting our requirement of providing the monitoring capability through the courts. 60 is going to basically allow us to not go out for contract, but to buy directly from the state contract, which is the best price. So that's going to optimize the opportunity to move quickly to buy this technology. 61 is a first reading for tonight. This is going to set up Fund 249, which is where the money from the county is going to come in, and it's where the bills are going to be paid going out. And then Resolution 62 is basically going to appropriate the money we get from the county into that fund, so all bills can be paid and all revenues can be received. So if we're going to have four in a row that we're going to suspend, they're all encompassed in that, in this particular discussion that I'm having right now. So if you want to continue the discussion or ask questions about all four now, I think it's, they all go together.
Thank you, Mr. Stot. A thorough explanation. Any questions about any of the four of these resolutions we're preparing to work through? Okay, hearing none, then we'll move forward with calling for the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Skunov?
Yes.
Mr. Stotan?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 59-19 passes eight to zero. Temporary Resolution 60-19.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to dispense with competitive bidding and enter into a contract for electronic monitoring services for criminal offenders under the state of Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Program to be utilized by the Fairfield County Municipal Court, offered by Mr. Stotan, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Stot?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Resolution 60-19. Further discussion, Mr. Stot? No, thank you.
Discussion from anyone else on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Skunov?
Yes.
Mr. Stotan?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodruff?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries eight to zero. Mr. Stot?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Resolution Temporary 6019.
Further discussion, Mr. Stot?
No, thank you.
Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Skunov?
Yes.
Mr. Stotan?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodruff?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 60-19 passes eight to zero. We're now first reading on Temporary Resolution 61-19.
A resolution to create a new fund and set up a revenue account and expense accounts for the Court Electronic Monitoring Fund 249, offered by Mr. Stotan, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Stot?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to council, suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of Resolution Temporary 6119.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution 61-19. Discussion, Mr. Stot?
No, thank you.
Other discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodchurch?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries eight to zero. Mr. Stotin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, resolution temporary sixty-nine nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution sixty-one dash nineteen. Mr. Stotin?
No, thank you.
Other discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodchurch?
Yes.
Temporary resolution sixty-one dash nineteen passes eight to zero. Temporary resolution sixty-two dash nineteen.
A resolution to increase receipts appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the Court Electronic Monitoring Fund two forty-nine, amend the certificate of other sources and appropriations with the county auditor, and issue a then-and-now, offered by Mr. Stotin, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Stotin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of resolution temporary sixty-two nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution sixty-two dash nineteen. Discussion, Mr. Stotin?
No, thank you.
Further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodchurch?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries eight to zero. Mr. Stotin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, resolution temporary sixty-two nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution sixty-two dash nineteen. Discussion, Mr. Stotin?
No, thank you.
Further discussion? Please call the roll.
Question?
Yes, Mr. Woodchurch. I'm sorry, I did not see you.
Uh, I noticed that we said that there was a savings with this new program. The county's going to pay, it looks here like two hundred and twenty-five thousand. What was the cost of the old program?
That's actually just money in the account. The, the old program, I think, cost nearly a million dollars a year. This is going to be about five hundred thousand.
Okay. That's why I wanted to know what the savings was. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Woodchurch. Are there other questions or discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodchurch?
Yes.
Temporary resolution sixty-two dash nineteen passes eight to zero. Temporary resolution sixty-three dash nineteen.
A resolution to amend Permanent Resolution twenty-eight dash eighteen, authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and to enter into a contract for the Park Street Locust Ewing Street Sewer Rehabilitation Project, offered by Mr. Woodchurch, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Woodchurch?
First reading, please.
First reading on temporary resolution sixty-three dash nineteen. Temporary resolution sixty-four dash nineteen.
A resolution to amend Permanent Resolution number sixty-eight dash seventeen, authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an agreement for engineering services for the Park Street and Locust Ewing Street Sewer Rehabilitation Project, which was formerly known as the two thousand seventeen Sewer Lining Project, offered by Mr. Woodchurch, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Woodchurch?
First reading, please.
First reading on temporary resolution sixty-four dash nineteen. Temporary resolution sixty-five dash nineteen.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the General Fund one oh one and amend the certificate with the county auditor, offered by Mr. Woodchurch, or, excuse me, offered by Mrs. Bobbitt, second by Mr. Woodchurch.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading on temporary resolution number sixty-five nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution sixty-five dash nineteen. Ms. Bobbitt, discussion?
Thank you. As we heard during our finance meeting, this is to cover a claim where a tree, a city tree, fell on a garage and a vehicle.
Very good. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodchurch?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries eight to zero. Ms. Bobbitt?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution number sixty-five nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, temporary resolution sixty-five dash nineteen. Discussion, Ms. Bobbitt?
Nothing further, thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodchurch?
Yes.
Temporary resolution sixty-five dash nineteen passes eight to zero. Temporary resolution sixty-six dash nineteen.
A resolution establishing the community reinvestment area three and authorizing real property tax exemptions up to one hundred percent for up to fifteen years on the construction of new residential units as established by section three seven three five point six five through three seven three five point seven oh of the Ohio Revised Code, offered by Mr. McDaniel, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, Mr. President. I, this is the first reading for this legislation, but I believe there are some members of council who would like to discuss this in more detail.
I believe that's true, and I also want to give the mayor an opportunity. If we want, we can throw those maps back up on the screen as we get ready to engage in this discussion. And as we do that, mayor, just briefly, if you could describe what this is about as we get this, as we get this dialed up here. Please.
So this resolution proposes a community reinvestment area for census tracts three seventeen, three twenty, and three twenty-two for multifamily housing. At least part of this area is already covered by community reinvestment area legislation, but it is restricted to industrial and commercial developments, and residential is specifically excluded from this. So this started out as an attempt to provide some incentive for some developer to do something with the gateway site at the remainder memorial, and in doing the research necessary to get this legislation before council and also passed by the Development Services Agency, I looked at the census tracts surrounding three twenty, and it became pretty obvious that these three census tracts are the poorest areas of town. For instance, the median family income for Lancaster is fifty-three thousand seven hundred, for the State of Ohio is sixty-six thousand nine hundred, and for Fairfield County as a whole is seventy-six thousand. But for these three census tracts, the median family income for three seventeen is forty-two thousand, for three twenty is thirty-six thousand eight hundred, and for three twenty-two is thirty-five thousand seven hundred. And there's a significant portion of the population in those three census tracts that are below the poverty line, thirty-four point seven percent in census tract three seventeen, twenty-seven and a half percent in three twenty, and thirty-eight percent in three twenty-two. So this is an effort to spur some development in these three census tracts. As I said, they are covered by an existing CRA, but they're not zoned for industrial or heavy commercial. So it's unlikely that any other development would happen in those three census tracts other than residential. So there, there hasn't been any new residential to speak of in these three census tracts for many years. The average age of the homes is sixty-one years for census tract three seventeen, seventy-five years for three twenty, and seventy-six years for three twenty-two. So if, if we could spur some multifamily housing development in these areas, it would bring construction jobs, and the housing itself hopefully would be affordable, and it would bring places to live, and also maybe spur some shopping, some grocery enterprises, et cetera, in the neighborhoods.
Very good. Thank you. So if I can just summarize very quickly, and then we'll get to questions from members of council. There's currently a CRA that exists, encompasses some of this area, but it excludes residential.
Correct.
And this is only for new multi-unit family residential development.
Right, for three residential units or more.
Correct. So no one that currently lives in these areas is going to get any sort of tax break or abatement on their property tax?
Correct.
Okay, so residential folks are going to continue to pay what they've been paying on their residential property tax?
Correct.
Very good. Thank you. What questions do members of council have? Yes, Mr. Groff?
Uh, yes, if I may, I did more than one question.
That's okay, go ahead.
Include a follow-up question, if I may. You say this is to spur new development.
Mm-hmm.
And in looking at that, first of all, it's like, we only received parcel numbers. I didn't see this map until tonight, but I did spot check on parcel numbers over the weekend and saw that this included what is known as east school property as well as the Lancaster Glass Site. And is it fair to say that those two properties are probably the major properties among this in looking at development?
Uh, those would certainly be two, yes, major. The Sherman School Site might be another one. That would be appropriate for development once the school moves out.
Okay, in spurring development, isn't it fair to say that the east school site has already been sold, and there's already been a development plan for it?
There is a planned development. I have no idea whether it's been sold or not, but...
Is it also fair to say on the Lancaster Glass Site, or fair, also, I've got a question about, as far as the development of that property, uh, yes, it's been vacant for a while. It was demolished and has been in the process of being cleaned up over about seven years or maybe eight years. The city applied for the grants to clean that property environmentally. Those grants amounted to approximately three million dollars from the state to do the environmental cleanup on that property. Those grants were based on the write-up from the city in the application, saying that this would spur so much in the way of tax dollars and so much in the way of jobs. It was written to be a mixed-use development of commercial and residential. If this does not follow what was written in order to get that three million dollars from the state, is the city liable to reimburse the state on that?
Uh, I, I'm not knowledgeable in that grant, or what was in that grant. I don't know. Randall, do you have any opinion about that?
Yeah, I would say the answer to that question, I mean, no, the, the grant, of course, was for cleanup of that site. You know, that has taken place. That was a public-private partnership, if you will, between the City of Lancaster and Wagon Brenner, who owns the property or whatever, as far as the cleanup and everything.
Yes, and Wagon Brenner had a development plan for it.
Yes, I bel, I believe they did, or do. But, yeah, that was done, I mean, you know, that was a Clean Ohio situation, where basically the purpose of that grant was to get the property back to a situation where it was clean, it was marketable, and it could be, you know, reused or whatever for, whatever, you know, for...
But the grant was based on how it would be developed, not so much, but to provide a certain amount in the way of tax revenues and to provide jobs.
I, I don't remember the specifics of the grant, of the language, but, I mean, what I can tell you is, is the state has been fully aware with regard to this grant, that, you know, Wagon Brenner has chosen not to develop it. So, you know, what I would think would logically follow from that is that if there was an issue with that, over the last couple of years, the state would have raised that they did not...
And you state that Wagon Brenner owns it, but when that was first applied for in the grant, Wagon Brenner was brought into it as a partner to clean the property itself, and that, you know, did he purchase that? Did the city receive anything for it? Or, you know, there was no record of that, but there was a record of, in the records where Lancaster Colony was looking to donate it to the city, and there were records saying that county commissioners were pushing to have it donated to the city, but there seems to be a lack of anything in the records on where Wagon Brenner ever actually bought it, or whether it was donated.
I think, it's been a long time since I looked at it, but I think a check of the auditor's website would show that Wagon Brenner did purchase. I don't know when, but, and I haven't looked at that in a period of time, but to my knowledge, if you go on the auditor's website, it will show the sale of the property or whatever. That, my understanding of this was that, you know, the city, the public-private partnership was so that the city could, of course, avail itself of the CORF grant funds for cleanup, but never had any ownership in the property at all.
Okay, I saw a couple other hands fly up here. Mr. Groff, we'll come back to you.
Well, just on a follow-up question, to, to finish this one off. When it comes to the Lancaster Glass Site Two, that cleanup did take a number of years, and I believe it was only about a year ago that the no further action permit from EPA was on that to make it even eligible to build on it?
May have been as long as two years ago. I don't remember, I don't remember the exact date, but it may have been, I think it was before I was mayor, so I've been mayor for nearly a year and a half now. It was, I believe it was before I was mayor, so I'm not exactly sure when it was.
Okay, then I do just have one other question.
Just one more?
Uh, well, it's too far.
Okay, well, let's move on.
Housing Office or Housing Council?
Okay, well, we'll come back to those. So let's move around to some others. I know I saw your hand, Mr. Stotin.
Well, I just want to stay on topic. I'm not sure how that's on point with a CRA three overlay on three tracts of property. I mean, if you want, if you've got an issue about the parcel in particular, then that's an offline discussion. We're talking about a community CRA for three tracts that, you know, want to promote, you know, multi, you know, multi-residential housing. So I just want to make sure we stay on point with the discussion.
Very good, Mr. Stotin. Thank you so much. Yes, Mr. Woodchurch?
Just a couple of comments. One, we did discuss in the finance committee, and that is that the one hundred percent is just a figure. It doesn't mean that it will be total one hundred percent of new construction. This has nothing to do with already existing?
The legislation calls for up to one hundred percent for up to fifteen years, and, you know, that's up to the, the housing council to decide what is actually allowed or awarded. So, and it, it, that's also on only new construction. So if a developer buys a piece of land, they will continue to pay real estate taxes on the land. If there are other buildings on the site that they, that are currently being taxed for real estate purposes, that will continue to be taxed. It's only on the new investment that, that any tax abatement is awarded for.
So that includes school taxes?
That includes all property taxes.
All property. So schools would be involved in this also?
Yes.
And council has no contact with this? Once we pass this, we don't have any say on the percentage?
I believe that's the case. Isn't that true, Randall?
I'm sorry.
Council, council has no legislative authority over what, what percentage or how many years it's awarded for?
No, there, yeah, there's not an approval process in that.
If I can just interject, the housing council will decide that, and city council will appoint two members to represent them, who cannot be members of city council, but, but they will serve as representatives of city council on that council. So you exercise your authority by virtue of those appointees.
One, one final point. It was mentioned that Sherman Site was in this. Sherman Site's in floodplain, so doubtful we would get
True.
the funds to
Unless it could be raised.
Elevated.
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 Very good. Thank you, Mr. Woodchurch. Yes, Mrs. Teener?
Um, to reiterate about that, it's, city council can revisit, revisit it in twenty twenty-nine.
Yeah.
For the ten years.
That's in the legislation, right.
Right.
Very good. Further question?
It's for ten years.
Right. So in ten years, we'll have an opportunity to decide once again whether or not the CRA should exist or not. We don't have any, any input, though, into the percentage or whether something's approved or not. Other questions? Ms. Bobbitt?
Just a quick question. South School would be in this also, correct?
Yes, correct.
So we would welcome development there?
Yeah, that's already being taken care of.
Very good. Further discussion before we head back to Mr. Groff?
Well, according to, follow-up on Melody's right there, South School is not being developed as residential, though, is it?
Not at this point.
No, but, I mean, South School's actually owned by Fairfield Community Health, and there, they have other plans, but if that, if those ever fell through, and it was sold as a residential development, it would be eligible.
Anyway, my question, this mentions a housing officer and a housing council.
Mm-hmm.
Who is that?
Pete Vale is the housing officer for the city, and the housing council has not been appointed yet. City council has two appointments, the mayor has two, the planning commission has one, and then those five individuals appoint two more, for a total of seven.
Will these be somebody from the community itself as opposed to a city employee?
Uh, it could be, you know. I, I don't know who the various parties might appoint. Uh, it could be, you know. I, I don't know who the various parties might appoint.
There's no list of people on this for appointment at this point?
Uh, not that I'm aware of. I know, I've talked to President Oll about the fact that you, this group needed to appoint two people.
Isn't the planning commission meeting on this this week?
The planning commission is meeting this, their regular monthly meeting is this Thursday, right.
Okay, and nothing's been advised to them on who?
Um, I, I actually suggested to them that the president of the planning commission, who is Paul Martin, would be their appointment, but it's up to them who they appoint.
The same holds true for us, Mr. Graff. This council will appoint two members, and it's our hope that we can get that done at the next meeting when this legislation comes forward, once suspension happens. And it can be anyone from, that City Council would choose, with the exception of any member of the legislative branch. And so, none of the nine members of council that are part of the legislative branch can serve in that, in that capacity. Mr. Stone?
What does the Housing Council do?
They, they actually have very limited function. They, they are charged with inspecting any property that is awarded a tax abatement every year. There is a report that has to be filed with the State of Ohio regarding that, and they hear any appeals about this issue and a few other things that come, you know, that they want to appeal, that come before them.
So, an example of an appeal would be that if the, if it were denied?
Mm-hmm.
Then that person could bring, or that developer could bring it before the Housing Council, who would hear that appeal?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And then I just had a different question about the housing officer. Is the housing officer defined as Pete Vale's role, or is that something that will be defined by the Housing Council?
It is defined by Pete Vale's role.
Very good, thank you.
So, it's, it's not necessarily Pete Vale named. It is the city building inspector.
All right, and then, give me the...
And that's the new high revised code.
What last statement?
It's, it's the role of Pete, Pete Vale's role.
Yes, Pete Vale's role, but he has been functioning as that for a number of years.
And then the last, just what are the makeup of the Housing Council again? Who appoints?
The mayor appoints two members, City Council appoints two members, the planning commission appoints one member, and then those five appoint two more.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Very good. Yes, Mr., well, who, anyone that hasn't spoken to this yet, before we head back to those who have. Mr. Woodger?
Well, back to the appointment. So, City Council cannot appoint a council member as one of those.
City Council cannot appoint one of the nine members from the legislative branch. That's right. So, none of the nine members of council can, can serve in that role.
Now, is the mayor also have some restrictions as far as, can he point government officials?
I'm not sure there are any restrictions regarding the mayor's role in his appointments.
Yeah, I'm no, I'm not aware of any.
I'm just questioning, you know. We, we're, we're limited, but everybody else isn't.
We can't have someone from the legislative branch serve.
You may recall that Councilman Hiles had to withdraw from the Historic Commission because we discovered that City Council members cannot...
Be on it, right.
Yeah, could not be on certain commissions.
It's just the ORC requirement.
Yeah, that's...
And one final point. And there, for instance, the area downtown, it still would not cause a problem. If someone come in and wanted to develop that commercially, they can do that. They just don't, that, that doesn't qualify them for any of this tax exemption. They would go under another possibility.
Yeah, there, there is a CRA covering that area, that if they wanted to do a commercial development, it would be covered.
This doesn't keep this area from having a commercial development, is what I'm saying.
Correct, correct. This only allows multifamily housing to be incentivized by the...
Incentivized, but you could still come up with other uses. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Woodger. Did I see your hand, Ms., Ms. Tina?
Yes, so I want you to reiterate again, because, see, I think the reason, the way this reads is why people think it's like 100%. And if it could be broken down in here in Section 4, like you say, what it covers that they would not have to pay. Because you said there's other things they have to pay, correct, on this, if they're not 100%?
It's, it's 100% of new investment. So, if, the, the real estate taxes on the land would continue, real estate taxes on any other building or structure on that property would continue. So, it's only on their new investment. So, if a developer came in and built a new multifamily residential building on a property, the, the tax abatement would cover that building only.
I mean, this feels very clear to me when you read the preamble, up to 100% for the construction of new residential units, and so...
Okay.
Am I missing something that you're...
Well...
Yeah, it's in, it's in, it says that in the preamble.
Right.
Yeah.
Is there something I'm missing that you're specifically looking for it to say differently, or?
Well, I'll just go, Mr. Graff has something.
Okay.
One quick clarification.
Yes, Mr. Graff?
Uh, the mayor stated that, or whoever was over there, no one from council can serve on this council, or from City Council can serve on this council. Can someone from the Planning Commission serve on this council?
Uh, to the best of my knowledge, they can.
Wouldn't that be a dual rule, because some of the development may have to go through Planning Commission itself, and then they would be on both?
Uh, I, I would have to say, I mean, on a case-by-case basis, you'd have to determine whether a conflict of interest actually exists, to blanketly say no. I, I couldn't say that.
Okay, just clarification.
Yeah.
Very good. Further discussion or questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
So, it's more for Randall, but, so no one from the legislative body can be, so it's not the nine, but council president could. He's part of the administrative body, correct?
Yes, that, that's correct.
If we wanted the council president to be a council representative, we could do that?
That is correct. You could do that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Stotan. Further discussion on this particular resolution. We are holding this over for two readings, and so this is only the first reading of this. We'll have opportunity to come back and revisit in two weeks. Anything else before we move on?
Oh.
Mr. Woodger?
The only point was, when we had the map up there for the audience at home, we never really explained what the map as far as where, where the areas were.
So, okay, so Sensus Track 317 is bounded roughly by the Hocking River up to almost Memorial Drive, back south on Pierce, then west on Fair, and then back down to Lincoln Avenue. Sensus Track 320 is bounded by the Hocking River on the west, High Street on the east, the railroad tracks on the south, and then it kind of jigs and jags from east to west along Fair Avenue, North Columbus Street, and then back over to Pierce Avenue. Sensus Track 322 is the near east side of town, bordered roughly by King Street, Ewing Street on the east side, geez, um, High Street on the east, and then, and then goes down, I'm not even sure what street that is, all, all the way down, yeah. Yeah, goes down Memorial Drive to the edge of town, basically. So, it's the near east side and south side of town.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. A robust discussion on an important piece of legislation. Anything further here? Well, let me just say, not as a proponent or opponent of the legislation, but just in general, the City of Lancaster needs more affordable housing. The mayor and I had opportunity to meet a couple months ago with Community Action. The housing report that they put together shows that we're at a deficit for affordable housing units in Lancaster, and so it's an important thing, and if this helps spurred along, then, then I think that can only be good. Mr. McDaniel, what's your pleasure on this?
Uh, two readings.
First of two readings, then, on Temporary Resolution 66-19. We'll now move on to Temporary Resolution 67-19.
A resolution authorizing the city engineer to assist the Fairfield County Transportation Improvement District in applying for the Ohio Department of Transportation's Transportation Improvement District funding for fiscal year 2020. This resolution is a furtherance of Project GWN Magna, offered by Mr. Schoonover, seconded by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third readings of Temporary Resolution 67-19.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution 67-19. Mr. Schoonover?
Uh, yes, this is giving Engineer Nolan an opportunity to submit a grant to the Transportation Improvement District for up to $250,000 to put towards some of the additional costs that we may run into with the Magna Seating Project out on Mill Park Drive.
Very good. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotan?
Yes.
Mrs. Tina?
Yes.
Mr. Woodger?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries eight to zero. Mr. Schoonover?
Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 67-19. Mr. Schoonover, further discussion? Just to add, the suspension is so Mr. Nolan can hit his deadline for the grant application, which is the end of this month.
Very good. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotan?
Yes.
Mrs. Tina?
Yes.
Mr. Woodger?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries eight to zero. Ms. Downhour?
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Resolution Temporarily Numbered 68-19.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution 68-19. Further discussion, Ms. Downhour?
No, thank you, sir.
Other discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotan?
Epstein.
Mrs. Tina?
Yes.
Mr. Woodger?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 68-19 passes seven to zero with one abstention. Are there any further resolutions to come before Lancaster City Council this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to the reading of ordinances, beginning with Temporary Ordinance 6-19.
Head ordinance to authorize the Service Safety Director to accept approximately 10 acres, more or less, of property situated in Township 14, Range 19, Section 2 and 3, City of Lancaster, Fairfield County, from Fairfield Homes, Inc., offered by Mr. Graff, seconded by Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. Graff?
Uh, yes. First of all, I'd like to change the second on this since it was Mr. Bass originally. So, let me see, Mr. Schoonover, I think that's who we have left.
Very good. That's who we will assign.
Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Ordinance 6-19.
Second. We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Ordinance 6-19. Mr. Graff, any discussion?
Uh, I don't have any unless our law director would like to add anything to this. I think we discussed it over the last couple of meetings.
I believe we have. Mr. Allam, you have anything?
I have one, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Temporary Ordinance 6-19? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotan?
Epstein.
Mrs. Tina?
Yes.
Mr. Woodger?
Yes.
Temporary Ordinance 68-19 passes seven to zero with one abstention. Are there any further resolutions to come before Lancaster City Council this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to the reading of ordinances, beginning with Temporary Ordinance 6-19.
Head ordinance to authorize the Service Safety Director to accept approximately 10 acres, more or less, of property situated in Township 14, Range 19, Section 2 and 3, City of Lancaster, Fairfield County, from Fairfield Homes, Inc., offered by Mr. Graff, seconded by Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. Graff?
Uh, yes. First of all, I'd like to change the second on this since it was Mr. Bass originally. So, let me see, Mr. Schoonover, I think that's who we have left.
Very good. That's who we will assign.
Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Ordinance 6-19.
Second. We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Ordinance 6-19. Mr. Graff, any discussion?
Uh, I don't have any unless our law director would like to add anything to this. I think we discussed it over the last couple of meetings.
I believe we have. Mr. Allam, you have anything?
I have one, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Temporary Ordinance 6-19? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotan?
Yes.
Mrs. Tina?
Yes.
Mr. Woodger?
Yes.
Temporary Ordinance 6-19 passes eight to zero. Are there any other ordinances to come before Lancaster City Council this evening? Seeing none, we'll move down the agenda. We have no tabled legislation this evening. Is there any unfinished business tonight? No unfinished business. Is there any new business? Mr. Mayor?
I just wanted to point out that the award that we were given at the National Cartograph Conference in Denver last week is on the table back here for everyone to see, and that basically was for our adaption of Cartograph to use by code enforcement. And, you know, it's, you know, it just points out how innovative some of the things that we do with Cartograph are. I also know that Cartograph and, I forget the name of the other software company, we're here, ISER?
Esri.
Ezra, Esri, were here a few months ago to look at specifically how the gas department was using Cartograph, and it's kind of a shining example of, to them, of what can be done with it. So, congratulations to Scott Snyder in IT. He did the work. He made the nomination and actually accepted the nomination at the conference in Denver. So, good work.
Very good. Congratulations to Scott and all involved on that award. Any further new business tonight? Mr. Martin?
Just to let you know, the mayor did do a post on our website. We are showing a live view that rotates out about every 60 seconds. It's from our bell tower. We might adjust some of the images that we're going to do. It's a movable camera, but we set these points. So, any resident yourself can say, hey, what's going on in downtown for the summer? And we're pleased to do that. I think the residents might enjoy that.
Very good. You can find that on the homepage of our website right now, and then also find a link of it off of the mayor's Facebook page as well. Further new business this evening? I have a couple of things. Very quickly, I had the opportunity to attend the police recognition lunch this past Friday, and Chief Pilar and his team put on a fantastic event. It was the first time I had the opportunity to go, and I was impressed by, one, how well the event was put together, and, two, by the, the great number of awards that were given out to the men and women of the Lancaster Police Department. So, we appreciate them, and I think last week was first responders week, and so we appreciate all of our first responders here in Lancaster that worked to keep us safe each and every day. Also want to give congratulations to our, our brethren, the Kiwanis Club of Lancaster. They turned 100 and had their 100th anniversary and celebration this past weekend, and so congratulations to the Kiwanis Club of Lancaster, and thank, and thanks to them for all the great work that they do, including, as you, as you may remember, the fantastic park that they're working to get put in over at, at Hunter Park. So, we appreciate them. Also want to remind folks that while we don't have any contested races now here in the City of Lancaster, that you should go out and vote tomorrow. The school board bond levy is on, and I would encourage you to go and to vote. Is there any other new business this evening? Ms. Bobbitt?
I just want to thank all the volunteers that came out for downtown cleanup on last Saturday. There was over 100 volunteers. We appreciate their help.
I saw the pictures of that, yes. It was, uh...
You saw mine, didn't you?
I did. I saw some ones. I don't know whose they were, but it was a great turnout. Okay. Any further new business this evening? Okay. If not, we'll move on then to the announcement of our regularly scheduled meetings.
Upcoming sessions of council, May 20th, 6:00 p.m. here in council chamber. The meeting following June 10th at 6:00 p.m. here in council chamber. Upcoming committee meetings, 6:30. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Thinking fine.
Yes.
Okay. Upcoming committee meetings. Economic Development, May 9th at 7:30 a.m. at the City Hall second-floor conference room service. May 10th at 7:30 a.m. at the gas department conference room. Water, water pollution control. May 15th at 7:00 a.m. at the water, water pollution control conference room. Finance, May 20th at 6:00 p.m. here in council chambers. And the final one is code enforcement, June 3rd, 7:00 a.m. at the conference room in City Hall on the second floor.
7:30.
7:30.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I apologize. Should we, if, are we going to have to appoint our members to this housing?
I think we would like to appoint the members to the housing board the next meeting when, when the legislation comes up for a vote if suspension carries.
Okay, so since that's coming through economic development, can we send ideas for people for that position to, you know, Chairman McDaniel?
I think that's a fine idea.
And, uh, that would, because if, if we need to, obviously populate the board as a part of the legislation, we don't have much time to do that for the next couple of weeks.
I don't think we need to do as a part of the legislation. I think it'll be a separate motion and second, yeah.
Well, yeah, I get that, but I mean, we should have it in place once the, once the reinvestment area is up and running, right?
Sure, absolutely. Uh, yeah, Mr. McDaniel, if you're okay with that? So, if you have ideas, I know I've had at least one person in the community who I've spoken with who has interest in serving. So, if you have thoughts, please send them to Mr. McDaniel. Please include a, a short bio, so that Mr. McDaniel can get those out to us here before the next meeting, so we have opportunity to consider who, who you may want to appoint as your two representatives. Mr. Mayor, you have a sense of when you're appointing your two, two people?
Uh...
Sometime in the next couple of weeks?
Well, I haven't had a chance to do anything concrete.
But Planning Commission will do theirs presumably this, this coming Thursday.
Hopefully.
Okay, so, yeah, I think us going through that process is good.
Sorry, hit me late.
That's all right. Okay, very good. And I would just like also to note that you'll notice between our May 20th and June 10th meeting, that is a three-week, you know, so if there's legislation that the city's working through, there will be a three-week gap between our meetings, because these meetings are moved up in May due to, due to Memorial Day. So, just note that three-week gap in between the 20th and June 10th meetings. Are there any bills this evening?
There are none to be presented.
Is there a need for an executive session? If not, a motion to adjourn is in order.
Mr. President, I'd like to make, like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Have a great week.
Kill the motions.
Paul, I need your signature.